If you would put us live. We are now on.
Good evening. I'll call the September 16th, 2020 meeting of Lebanon City Council of Order, and I'll ask Council Bronner to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
Streets of America.
Thank you. So before we start tonight's meeting, I'd like to offer a moment of silence for the loss of one of our more famous citizens recently, Ed Ashen. I've known Ed for a long time now. Ed was not quite a native of Lebanon, but about as close as you could get. He moved here at a very young age. Ed was one of my go-to guys for any information on the history of Lebanon, particularly photographs. He maintained an encyclopedic collection of all Lebanon photographs, and you could ask him for just about anything, and sooner or later he would produce it. So Ed will be very much missed, both as a friend and as someone who had incredible historical knowledge of the city, which luckily he was able to catalog a lot of and pass on for posterity. So if we could please offer a moment of silence for Ed. Thank you. We'll start with our public forum announcement. Excuse me, our public service announcement. This meeting is being conducted according to the provisions of RSA 91A and Route 212 issued by the government of San Antonio. Meeting is being conducted virtually and virtually only because of COVID-19 pandemic. It is not practical or safe for the council to meet in person, so therefore we're being conducted virtually. It's also not practical for the general public to meet with the council from the risk of spreading the virus amongst members of the public and the council. So therefore it's being conducted virtually as well as by phone. If you participate by phone, you wish to speak when you're recognized by the mayor to do so, dial *6, and then you will be allowed to speak. For those of you who are on the phone and also have this on your computer, there's about a 20-second delay that's going to create some confusion for you. I would suggest that when you that against the time that you want to speak, that if you're on the phone, you do it just on the phone and that you mute your computer. Otherwise, it creates quite a bit of confusion when you're trying to do both. Again, *6 when you want to speak, and then the mayor will recognize people to do so and allow them to do so at that time. Thank you. Public forum announcement. As always, any member of the public who desires to speak on any item may do so when the item is taken up by the council, if it's an item on our agenda. And you'll be allowed to speak on the subject for not more than three minutes. And we ask you to state your name. We don't take anonymous comments. If you live in Lebanon, state your ward of residence, please. One, two, or three. We traditionally open our meetings with a few minutes where we are open to the public for items which are not on tonight's agenda. So if there's anyone from the public who has an item that they'd like to speak to briefly that's not on tonight's agenda, now would be the time to speak up. Do we have anyone?
Yes.
You're muted. Yeah, there you go.
Thank you. I always really just like to thank the city clerk and all of our election officials after an election. And there was one last week, and there was a recount that showed that our votes are well-counted in the city of Lebanon and also in other towns around us as well. But what was really remarkable is that this year there was just a record-setting number of people who turned out, but particularly who exercised their ability to vote by absentee. So I know it was a lot of extra work, and there were a lot of new people who participated in helping as election workers. And, you know, despite all of those circumstances, everything was just incredibly smooth. And so I wanted to thank our city clerk and ask her to extend my appreciation to all of the people that made that possible in the city of Lebanon. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have any comments on anything not on tonight's agenda? Okay, hearing none. We will move on and we'll take a roll call vote. I know that Council Prentice is not here yet, but she will be. Do you want the clerk to take the roll call vote?
Yes, she did.
Yes, Kristen, could you take the roll call vote, please?
Yes. Mayor McNamara?
Yes, I'm here.
Assistant Mayor Belo?
You're muted.
I'm here.
Councilor Bronner?
Bronner's here.
Councilor Highstead?
Council Highstead here alone.
Councilor Hill?
Hill is here.
Councilor Prentice? She said she's not going to be joining us.
She'll be joining later.
Later, okay. Councilor Sykes?
Yes, I'm present and alone.
Councilor Winnie?
Council Winnie is present and alone.
And Councilor Zook?
Councilor Zook is here.
Okay, you have a call.
Thank you very much, Kristen. Okay, we don't have any recognitions this evening, except the one that we just gave for Ed Ashen. For our next item is the acceptance of minutes from the September 2nd, 2020 meeting. Would someone like to make a motion on that set of minutes?
I move we approve the minutes as presented.
Thank you, Council Highstead. Does that motion second? Council Bronner seconds. Any comments on the September 2nd minutes or corrections? Okay. Hearing none, I will ask Kristen to take a vote. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor McNamara?
Yes.
Assistant Mayor Belo?
Still muted.
Yes, yes.
Okay, Councilor Bronner?
Bronner votes yes.
Councilor Highstead?
Council Highstead votes aye.
Councilor Hill? She's starting to vote, yeah. She's giving me the thumbs up. That's a yes. Councilor Sykes?
Council Sykes votes yes.
Councilor Winnie?
Council Winnie votes aye.
Councilor Zook?
Councilor Zook votes yes.
All right, and that passes.
Thank you very much. Our next item is appointments. We only have one this evening. It's an appointment to Cemetery Board of Trustees, and it's a reappointment of Dave Muzzi as a regular member. And I believe Councilor Sykes interviewed Dave Muzzi. Would you like to speak to your nomination?
Yes. David and I, and his mom actually, had a nice conversation out in front of my house in the afternoon as they were walking around the neighborhood. And he is already a regular member of the Cemetery Board, so he understands its duties and what they need to take care of. And he is anxious to continue his service with the city, and therefore I unreservedly recommend his appointment.
Thank you very much. So that nomination does not require a second. I will ask, are there any questions of this nomination from any of the other council members? Okay, hearing none, I will ask Kristen to take a roll call vote, please.
Mayor McNamara?
Yes.
Assistant Mayor Belo?
Belo votes yes.
Councilor Bronner?
Bronner votes yes.
Councilor Highstead?
Council Highstead, you're muted.
Sorry about that. Council Highstead votes aye.
Thank you.
Councilor Hill?
Hill votes yes.
Councilor Sykes?
Council Sykes votes yes.
Council Winnie?
Council Winnie votes aye.
Council Zook? Zook votes yes.
All right, that passes.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to our public hearing item. We only have one this evening. This is a public hearing for the purpose of receiving public input and taking action on a proposed public services grant application for up to $500,000 in CDBG-CV funds, CDBG coronavirus funds, to be sub-granted to West Central Behavioral Health for their mobile health crisis response initiative and to authorize the city manager to sign, submit, and execute any documents which may be necessary to effectuate the CDBG application. We'll start off with an apple of presentation, then we will open this to the public. So I believe we let the city manager kick this off. We may have representatives from West Central on the phone as well.
I'm sorry, can I interrupt? There's music or a lot of background.
Yeah, there's nothing we can do about it. It's loud music downstairs at the restaurant. It's a testament to the economic vitality of our downtown area. We're just demonstrating that at the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so this is part of a larger strategy to do with public health and mental health in the community. And this opportunity came up as a result of COVID-19. And this is not a normal round of funding for community block grants that you convey with, that we deal with on an annual basis and semi-annual basis, I should say. This is a special program that's related to COVID-19. But the larger strategy is this. Our goal is to provide community health services in the community. Part of that is the Community Paramedicine Program we're working on. It's a pilot program that will allow for a paramedic to be operating in the community and providing health services in the community. And also considerably upstaffing and financing the community nurse program. I think we have, I don't know if it's $10,000 or $15,000 this year. We're looking at putting out $75,000 next year. And that should be funded as part of the pilot from Durham, Chicago, Minnesota. So that's part of that program. The other component of that is the mental health piece. West Central Behavioral Health has been working on this issue for some time. They have been, there was a plan for them to submit RFP back in February. The state was supposed to develop an RFP for mental health services in the community, very similar to what we're looking at going with the Community Paramedicine Program. That got delayed into COVID-19, and then RFP was delayed. And I believe they're working on putting that out now as a $6 million pool of money that potentially West Central Behavioral Health could apply for that would allow for the very program we're talking about. I think I know more of the details of that. I won't get into the details of that. But mostly, for the most part, what that does is that's going to allow response in the community during the non-traditional hours, during the evening hours, where they would be able to respond to somebody's house or business where we had a mental health crisis to deal with. Right now, the good people are able to do that after hours are our fire departments and our police department. And those folks are not, obviously, they're not training clinicians in mental health. They do the best they can, but they have it. They can't provide a quality service that we would like to provide. And the goal is to minimize situations that don't turn into crisis that have major impacts on the person, the patient, their family, and the community at large. And again, I'll go into the details of that. This program will allot funding for an 18-month period to provide those services they were talking about, and they'll detail those services. And then if this $6 million pool actually becomes available, and there are questions about the funding at the state level and with everything else right now, we all understand that. But if we're successful with both this grant and West Central Behavioral Health is successful with their RFP and receive that, we're going to be able to provide those services funded through state and federal funds. But like everything else, as we know, these programs come, this money gets provided, and then eventually those programs tend to go away. Eventually, that's going to require, if we're interested in continuing those services, it's going to require funding from municipalities, which we have seen in other social service programs that we provide. I had a meeting with the other communities, and our police chiefs have been working with this as well, about developing a structure, a long-term structure. I'm like what we have with the present social service agencies. Presently, our social service agencies come with, they agree they ask for money, write them a check, to provide the services that they provide, but there was no agreement with them to do that. This is going to require some structure because our police departments, our fire departments, and our human services departments in various towns are going to have to follow protocols and work together as a team to provide the service. The goal is to minimize the amount of police response that's necessary and fight upon ambulance calls for things that are not critical to what they do. Having the right person, the clinician, go out in the community and provide that service. That is the key to that in reducing these more expensive services that the city has to provide. And when they get there, they really can't provide quality mental health services anyway. There are going to be certain services where you need to respond with a safety issue or if it's a medical issue for the fire department. But the goal is to reduce those amounts of calls. That's the long-term objective of the city. And without any further ado, I want to turn it over to Vicki Davis and Roger Osmond from West Central Behavioral Health to talk about the specifics of what the grant involves and the program that we provide.
Hello, this is Roger Osmond. I'm the CEO of West Central Behavioral Health. I could not have described the proposal really any better.
Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, Vicki, we can hear you.
Okay, I just introduced myself. I am the grant administrator. I work for the Upper Valley Lake Sunapee Regional Planning Commission, and I'll be doing the grant writing and administration. I'm working with Shelley Hadfield, so she can show me the ropes on how to do this. And I think Roger is right there, and he can explain the process. Sorry for interrupting you, Roger. Go ahead.
Roger's still there? If we lose Roger? Roger, if you're there, if you're on the phone, please dial *6 in the light of this meeting.
Hi, this is Dave Salone from West Central Behavioral Health. Are you able to hear me?
Are you able to hear me at this time?
Yes.
Okay. I must have gotten remuted at this point.
That's okay.
Well, good evening. I just wanted to say that the description that was given was very accurate, a very excellent description of what we're looking to do. As a provider in Lebanon, we've always had a very active investment in the mental health services that we can offer the community. As such, we have, at this current time, one full-time employee through our crisis service that's funded through the state. My dialogue with the city has really reflected our own investment in expanding that service to reflect 24-hour capability, especially as we have seen data from the city that has reflected that there are a lot of calls after hours, in particular between midnight and 8:00 AM, that have reflected mental health or substance use needs that have been engaging either police or EMTs, as was mentioned earlier, that really doesn't reflect their skill set, and particularly with police, when it's not a criminal matter. We want to activate our service. So the grant proposal reflects the ability to expand beyond our one full-time employee to reflect 24/7 coverage for at least the 18 months of that grant. Again, we're looking for other funding options that could supplement that or to extend it beyond that 18 months. And as was mentioned earlier, we are also very hopeful that the state will issue an RFP. West Central is intending to partner with the H in responding to that RFP regarding statewide crisis availability to really ensure that all communities have this access. And as was mentioned earlier, the goal is to not just be a handoff from first responders, but ideally, we want to be able to be accessible directly by the individual, family members, coworkers, school personnel, wherever the crisis may be, that they can contact us directly to not tie up other resources, but to utilize what we have available.
Okay, thank you, Roger. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone on the line in the public that has any questions regarding this proposed program or the funding of? Okay, hearing none on the close vote. While you're queuing it up, there was a letter that I sent to members of the council. Okay, you should have received for the table work in support of the grant application. I would have tagged that. Okay, thank you. I will close the public hearing. Counselors, any questions, comments? Yes, Council Belo? You're muted.
Thank you, sorry. I just want to commend the city manager, the police chief of the Lebanon Police Department, and especially West Central Behavioral Health, and everyone who's been involved in bringing this forward in such a short time period. I think it's an outstanding proposal, and I think hopefully we can help be a model for other communities in how to more appropriately address mental health crises. So I just want to appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Assistant Mayor Belo. Council Prentice?
Everything Assistant Mayor Belo just said, I thank you. Couldn't have said it better. And I wanted to say that I appreciate the city manager kind of integrating this into a larger picture that involves, you know, community nursing and community paramedicine. But I think, you know, it fits in very well. And this is just a really appropriate course, and it's good to see the thought about the integration. So this is not siloed. I did just want to ask, this is a question that came up when we were at the last meeting voting on this to be a public hearing item, was about dispatch or how, and I may have missed that, but what's the protocol going to be for how these services will be dispatched to a scene? Like, will it come through 911, and then there'll be a decision there? Do you have, Sean, can you explain any of that?
Yeah, and Roger, I'm sure you're sure that you'll make-
I'm sure you can. I just wanted to ask.
But yes, so some of these calls might come in 911. They might come into the non-incident network at the station. They might come in through 211. They might come in through Headrest or other phone services. And this is a service that will be available and during the second shift and potentially the third shift too, depending on the funding levels that we have. And depending on the protocol, the dispatch would go through that protocol, right? If it's not a high-risk situation, there's a pose of risk to the clinician that's going to go out there, they would simply make a phone call or text or whatever. The clinician would contact them and say, look, can you go to whatever address in the city this person's having an issue and needs some assistance? And they would simply go there. There would be no, in that case, if there's no risk, if there's no danger, or the risk level is low enough, there would be no police response, and it would be a portion of fire department response unless there's a physical injury of some sort. So that's going to clear a certain number of calls. Roger can certainly talk more about this. He actually ran or was participating in a program just outside of Philadelphia. They've been doing this, and it's worked very, very well. So, like, Roger, just to talk about some of the details about how you actually, the mechanics of how you actually handle that.
Yeah, I mean, if I can just speak briefly to your question. I think we would be working very closely with the 911 dispatch system. I think we would have to look at any rules or regulations that they're required to work under with respect to who they can contact directly and such. But, you know, again, I think what we can try to do here is to create a culture change over time in which, you know, ideally, those things don't even have to go through 911. They can go to our 800 number, you know, 24/7 to contact directly. But we do have, you know, a history of working with 911 dispatch and at least notifying us. We also have experience in working with police and EMS when they've been activated, but they believe that our resources would be needed. So there would be multiple opportunities for the community to get access to the crisis service. The hope would be ideally down the road that they would be able to try to reach us directly.
Again, thank you very much. And this is, I'm just so pleased this is moving forward so rapidly. Everything Cliff said, thank you.
Counselors, any other counselors, questions?
Yeah, Council Hill?
Yes, Council Hill.
I'll echo what Cliff and Sue said and just add that I also appreciate the discussions that it sounds like are starting to happen about the potential regionalization of this. And so I think that's another aspect that I just want to take notice of.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Council Highstead.
Having been involved way back when ERS first got started, it's been an ongoing need. And I and my foster child was one of the first responders on the phone down there. And they were amply used at that point and had been since. And I think whatever we can do to continue this, the better off Lebanon will be. So thank you very much for continuing an effort which is sorely needed.
Thank you. Yes, Council Sykes?
Yeah, I'd like to chime in too with my thoughts about this. This is the kind of innovative thinking that can be a struggle to get started. So starting on this, and that's a great thing. I look at it as almost like prevention, where I've always been in my career about trying to prevent escalation of or more serious nature of various calls that the city may be called upon for service. This is a way to avoid escalation, avoid to get the person the care that they need and to be good stewards of city resources. So I'm fully in support of this concept.
Thank you. Council Bronner?
I'd like to bring in the motion.
Okay, please do.
Community development block grant funds are available to municipalities for economic development, public facility and housing rehabilitation projects, and feasibility studies that primarily benefit low and moderate income persons. The purpose of the public hearings required for CDBG funding is to solicit the view of citizens on community development, furnish citizens with information concerning the amount of funds available and the range of community development activities which may be undertaken under the Community Development Act. For the remainder of the year 2020, New Hampshire has been allocated two awards of CDBG-CV funds totaling approximately $10 million. The CDFA has identified that there is a significant need for public service assistance, additional microenterprises and small business technical assistance. Of the initial $5.4 million award, CDFA has allocated approximately $1.7 million to microenterprises and small business technical assistance, which has been awarded. The remaining $3.7 million is available for this public service round, for the public services round. The city of Lebanon is eligible for up to $500,000 in each of the following categories: housing, public facilities, and economic development. Emergency grants of up to $500,000 and planning grants of up to $25,000. Move that the Lebanon State Council hereby approve the submittal of the public service grant application for up to $500,000 in CDBG-CV funds to be sub-granted to West Central Behavioral Health with their mobile health crisis response initiative and authorize the manager to sign, submit, and execute any documents which may be necessary to effectuate the CDBG application.
Thank you. Second, Council Prentice seconds. Any further discussion? Yeah, Assistant Mayor Belo?
Thank you. I just wanted to thank Council Highstead. He reminded me of the fact that when I first lived in Lebanon, some 40-odd years ago, I worked on the hotline at Headrest doing overnight shifts and trained as an EMT, got certified to do alcohol crisis intervention work. So I understand the need.
Thank you very much.
Chris Parker.
All right, any other comments, questions? Kristen, would you please take the roll call vote?
Mayor McNamara?
Yes.
Assistant Mayor Belo?
You're muted.
Yes, yes, I was going on and off.
Council Bronner? Council Bronner?
Council Bronner? Bronner votes yes.
Council Highstead?
Council Highstead votes aye.
Council Hill?
Hill votes yes.
Councilor Prentice?
Prentice votes yes.
Council Sykes?
Council Sykes votes yes.
Council Winnie?
Council Winnie votes enthusiastically aye.
And Council Zook?
Council Zook has a very enthusiastic yes.
All right, passes nine to zero.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to whole business. We have one item. This is a New Hampshire Municipal Association Legislative Policy Recommendations.
This is a New Hampshire Municipal Association Legislative Policy Recommendations. We've been working on this now for a couple of months, trying to pick off a few of the recommendations every meeting. We've actually finished with the policy recommendations, and we're down and out of two items, the legislative principles, and then a floor policy proposal that's recently been submitted by the Selectmen of the Town of Hudson. Sean, if you'd like to speak to these, just hold up here real quick, I'm just responding. Okay, so the legislative principles are basically the basics of every piece of advocacy that we do, it's just that they're basic concepts, and they are what they are, legislative principles. They're, they flush between 10 and 9, and we have the present number, right? There's been a couple of changes this year, but for the most part, these are the principles as they have been for quite some time. Again, they're pretty basic, and they apply in everything that we do. In fact, the last one was added by the, number 11, the mayor from Claremont actually came up with that one, and it was really appropriate. We eliminated one, and we added that particular one. It sounds real simple, number 11, encourage clarity and elimination of ambiguity in statutory language, especially areas of decision-making authority. It sounds like a real simple concept, and the reality is, we all know that we have looked at city ordinances, not just ours, but others, as well as state federal laws, and you say, "So what does it mean?", and this drives that particular point. So these can be found on page 45 of the council packet, and for the benefit of the audience, to the extent we have one this evening, and for the record, I'll just very quickly read the 11 legislative principles that are being proposed this year by the NHMA. The first is to identify and oppose mandates that violate Part 1, Article 28A of the New Hampshire Constitution. The second is to work to maintain existing revenue streams and municipalities, i.e. revenue sharing, meals and rooms tax, highway and other state aid. Be especially watchful of proposals to reduce local aid in order to meet other funding requirements, and we've certainly have seen this in the past. Number three is to advocate to maintain and enhance existing local authority. Number four is to support legislation that provides greater authority to govern more effectively, efficiently, and flexibly at the local level, including local option legislation. The legislature is considering adopting a local program that is particularly controversial at the local level, supporting the requirement that a local legislative body was necessary for full implementation of the measure. Number five is to support bills filed by individual municipal members, except when they conflict with these principles or NHMA's legislative policies. Staff should prioritize their time and resources where there are competing demands in order to focus on NHMA's broad agenda and purpose. Number six is to encourage exemptions from state taxes rather than local property taxes, and the legislative intent is to preserve statewide resources. Number seven is to advocate for municipal representation on state boards, commissions, and study committees that affect municipal government and have non-legislative members. Number eight is to work cooperatively with other groups and associations to support efforts to improve the delivery of services at the local level. Number nine is to support municipal efforts toward effective regional and state cooperation, delivery of municipal and state services. Number 10 is to advocate for local options for economic development and vitality in partnership, including public-private partnerships with regional and state economic development goals to encourage the overall economic health and social well-being in New Hampshire. And as Sean mentioned, number 11, which was brought up by the mayor of Claremont, the city manager of Claremont, is to encourage clarity and the elimination of ambiguity in statutory language, especially in areas of decision-making authority. It wasn't the mayor. It wasn't the mayor. Any comment on these legislative principles? Yes, Assistant Mayor Belo?
The 10th one also bears the influence, I think, of the city of Lebanon, perhaps the manager. I also worked on it in our committee, with some, it came from some of the ideas of having the economic development vitality recovery policy that was in the other more detailed principles, legislative principles.
And that's an important piece there because it's very similar to the legislative policy position. When we met the supplementary board chairs, vice chairs, and that, we felt, we agreed with the committee that Assistant Mayor Belo was on, this really needs to be one of the better items in there, and so we highlighted basically again, here's a basic principle. We agree we can correct through their proposal, and that's why it's been out.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions about the 11 proposed legislative principles? Okay, I think I'd like to separate mention on this one, would someone make a motion that we approve the legislative principles as presented on page 45 of our packet?
No move.
Thank you, Councilor Heist, have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilor Hill. Kristin, would you please take a roll call vote on this?
Assistant Mayor Belo?
Belo votes yes.
Council Bronner?
Bronner votes aye.
Council Heist?
Council Heist votes aye.
Council Hill?
Hill votes yes.
Council Prentice?
Prentice votes yes.
Council Sykes?
Council Sykes votes yes.
Council Winnie?
Council Winnie votes aye.
Council Zook?
Council Zook votes yes.
And Mayor? Yes, I vote yes as well, thank you. That brings us to the floor policy proposal that's brought up by Hudson Board of Selectmen. Sean, are you prepared to discuss this one?
Yes, I can explain a little bit, thank you. So basically, without reading the whole thing, as you know, the legislature, whether you probably, whether you know it or not, the legislature reduced the interest rate for unpaid taxes. There's a 30-day period, and there's a period after that. So you have a 30-day period in which you pay 12% interest rate, and then it was reduced to 18, and that has of course been changed, it had been reduced to smaller numbers of 8% and 14% respectively. That's what the taxpayer would pay if they're delinquent on their taxes, so it went from 18 and 12 down to 14 and 18. So when there is an abatement, when something's been overcharged for taxes, we also have to pay that person the interest. So what the Board of Selectmen and Hudson Assembly is-
May I ask you another question? I'm sorry, is, any questions from the audience? I think that's 10, okay. So what they're proposing is a similar reduction in the interest rate that a municipality has to pay a person on the other side of the corner from 6% to 4%. It's obviously not as, the reduction they're talking about is not as dramatic, but it coincides with the same concept that the taxpayer pays lesser interest rate, the municipality pays a lesser interest rate. That's the concept here, what they're proposing. Councilors, any questions on this? Seems fairly straightforward. Would someone like to make a motion that we support the floor policy proposal Hudson Board of Selectmen? Yes, Assistant Mayor Belo?
I'll move that we support the floor policy proposed by Hudson.
Have a second on that, please?
Second.
Second from Councilor Hill. Kristin, would you please take a roll call vote?
Assistant Mayor Belo?
Yes.
Mayor Belo?
Yes.
He got promoted.
Heist. Council Bronner?
Bronner votes aye.
Council Heist?
Council Heist votes aye.
Council Hill?
Hill votes yes.
Council Prentice?
Prentice votes yes.
Council Sykes?
Council Sykes votes yes.
Council Winnie?
Council Winnie votes aye.
Council Zook?
Zook votes yes.
And Mayor Matt Manera?
Yes, thank you. I know, I got moved to the back of the bus, exactly. Okay, thanks very much, folks. That finishes up our business with the NHMA. That moves us on to the first item of new business, which is discussion and action on the development agreement reporting Spencer Street with the Braverman Company LLC, the constructed multifamily residential mixed-use structure. We've been talking about this for a very, very long time. We're going to have a brief presentation by the manager, and I know we also have Ken Braverman on the phone too, and David Brooks as well, our main development director. So as you know, the council made decisions to use, to have a scenario, we need to redevelop the old DPW site located at 20 Spencer Street, which has not been used in quite some time as we moved out to a different location. So the building is set there, there are a number of environmental issues that you're aware of on that particular site, particularly in one corner, we had a number of oil tanks, those have all been removed. We presently have a pileup dirt that has some PCP, and we're going to be removing that very shortly, disposal facility. And then we're testing on the site. But the most problematic materials have been removed, the environment fragments, which have been invaded for the most part, there's still some unresolved issues that are being worked out, some testing that will have to occur. And the building has run the polyps, asbestos, that was located in there, it's been removed, so we have to clear the whole site on the issues I just talked about. So it's leveled out there, and where we're in pursuit of that, the goal was that we would have this agreement to you might equal, but 2019 is to push that back a little bit, in the back and forth with attorneys to work out the agreement that you have in front of you, and we think at this point we're ready to move forward on that. This is an example of one of the multi steps to redevelop our downtown area. It addresses some of the needs of the back needed housing in our city. It coincides with the smart, we had a plan initially, we're continuing to implement. It has an opportunity, this is a market rated housing project with an opportunity for some workforce housing to be included within that, these goals, of course. The sale price of the property, $1,504,000. My plan is to see the funds for that transaction, to reinvest that money right back into that particular neighborhood, to make some significant repairs to Spencer Street, add its plan, engineering work, and the goal is that we will place work to coincide with the work that's being done by the Braverman Company, construction of the building. That project, it's just over $90,000 to reconstruct the street there, put in some sidewalks, and also some sewer work that has already been done, and we've placed flash beacons where the rail trail crosses right now, which we don't presently have. In addition to that, the plan is to pave the rail trail from Spencer Street down to Bank Street Extension, and fix the drainage issues that along the rail trail there. So that's going to help redevelop that whole neighborhood there, and we're going to be doing that with the funds that we get from the sale of the property. That is the objective that we are trying to accomplish. We'll talk more about the capital projects, obviously, on October 21st, when we talk about CIP, we'll get into more details of that. We're looking at a building that's going to be approximately valued at around $18 million, somewhere in that range, and that's about $580,000 a year that we'll be bringing in in new property taxes that will go to, all of that will go to the Tiff District, that the city has set up, the council has set up, to help further develop the downtown area, so that'll be a major boost of revenue to help things get going, to help then redevelop in that area. There's also about $580,000, I talked about the store, it's about $580,000 of the store work we're going to have to, which we have to do anyway, on that particular street. So that's kind of the broad picture of what we're going to do. And I'd like to turn it over to David and Ken, we have some visuals for them, you've seen before, but we're just going to go over the project with you again, since then some time, since we've done that. And as you know, this is a, these RFPs were reviewed by the Development Commission members of that, as well as the Tiff District Board, they worked on that, that Council Sykes, I believe, was involved in that process as well. The only thing is getting to the point where we could get a proposal in front of you folks. So I'll turn it over to David and Ken.
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
I think Manager Mulholland has covered almost everything that was in the staff memo of September 8th that's in your packet tonight. A couple of updates, the Public Works Department has already hosted a public meeting relative to the redevelopment of Spencer Street itself that was held last Thursday, last Wednesday, September 9th, to gather input from property owners along that corridor and others around the community about that project. Also, with respect to the cleanup effort, the Regional Planning Commission's Brownfield Advisory Committee has authorized the use of additional Brownfields grant funds to help assist with the additional soil sampling that's needed to address some of the cleanup efforts that Manager Mulholland mentioned, to address some of the EPA requirements for that project. So I'm going to go ahead and share my screen, and I believe Mr. Braverman is on the phone to walk through the materials that are being presented. Again, as Manager Mulholland mentioned, you've seen these before, but for anyone in the public who might be seeing this for the first time, let me know if you can see my screen there.
We can, yes, we can.
Okay. Ken, are you available?
Yeah, this is Ken. Hi, everyone, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the time and counsel. I apologize for the technical glitches on my end. I am joining by phone. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, we can, yeah.
Okay, great, thank you, thank you. So I don't see the screen, but I'm pretty well aware of what the images are. I think my goal was to kind of refresh everyone's memory as to who I am, what we do, and what our vision is for the site. We're extremely excited to be here tonight, we're extremely excited to advance the project. As most of you know, the redevelopment of Spencer Street is a real opportunity for the city to kind of create a new gateway into the downtown, and we're excited to be part of that. The original hook that got us really interested in the downtown was the city's visioning study, and we'd like to work with the city to kind of set that in motion and bring it to life. So the concept that we're proposing is 103,000 square foot building, plus or minus, which is approximately 94 residential units. Our group also has the adjacent property of 10 Spencer Street under contract, and our vision is to kind of create a project that blends both old and new, and provides exceptional pedestrian connections to the downtown. That's the thing that really gets us excited about this project, is not only the sidewalks and the connections to the downtown, but the amazing opportunities associated with the rail trail. And really thinking about the project as the unique opportunity to make those connections, and for people, and more people, to be able to live in the downtown and enjoy what the downtown has to offer. I think, I'm not sure where we are in terms of the slides, the building is one that is similar to numerous buildings that we've built in downtowns. We kind of have a style of development that we like to advance, which is typically kind of high-quality durable materials that are kind of scaled and masked and reminiscent of historic downtowns, which is what we propose here. Part of that vision that we've done in other places, and would like to do here, is also kind of creating an active streetscape with entrances from the building to the sidewalk in kind of a rowhouse-style feeling. The buildings that we build are typically four-story wood-framed construction over a parking deck. It's a kind of a construction methodology that we're super familiar with, and we think works great in the downtown. In terms of key benefits that we see moving forward, obviously you guys received a copy of the development agreement, that's something that we think came together very nicely, working with Sean and David and your legal team. We're happy to answer any and all questions relating to that, but the goal is for that to kind of be our document moving forward, and to accelerate not only what we think is the vision for what should be on that site, but really setting it in motion and making it a reality. Obviously, the economic benefits, there's lots of key, like, public benefits, you know, including converting a underutilized brownfield, creating this gateway that we're talking about, streetscape improvements, which I think Sean and the DPW team- about, streetscape improvements, which I think Sean and the DPW team will talk about in terms of Spencer Street improvements and how this project could interact with those. And then obviously, another key part of the project that we'd like to talk to the council about tonight is a workforce housing component and how we could work together to achieve that. In terms of economic benefits, the purchase price, you know, we think is obviously, you know, kind of an obvious benefit to the city. Some of the less obvious benefits are kind of providing a strategic inventory of housing. We all know that the Upper Valley has a demand for housing. We all know that there are a number of projects that are being proposed within the region that will help to address that. However, you know, we think that downtown housing is really incredibly important, and there's, I think, and our research has indicated that there's considerable pent-up demand, and more and more people want to live in and enjoy your downtown, and we want to be part of that. Another indirect economic benefit, we think, is we like to build housing where people don't have to drive everywhere, where they could maybe park their car or even have less than a car per household and be able to walk, be able to bike, be able to take public transportation to their jobs. And we think this site really helps to promote that. You know, I think David and Sean have been really good in terms of advancing a lot of the public part of the deal. As Sean mentioned, there's a bunch of environmental issues that the city has done a great job advancing and moving those along to the point where we think we're on the other end of that. And then the other key piece is coordination of public infrastructure. Our firm's got a lot of experience in working with municipalities and DPWs. When there is a public-private partnership and public dollars are being used to kind of help leverage private development and vice versa, where private development is being helped to help leverage public infrastructure, there's quite a bit of coordination that needs to take place. And we have a lot of experience with that. And the development agreement, while it seems kind of simple, there's a lot of experience that goes into kind of, okay, when do you start construction? And when does the sewer lines and the water lines and the streetscape improvements and the sidewalks and the streetlights? And how do all those things kind of need to come together so everyone is able to keep advancing their particular project while not being in conflict with one another? And we think we've had some good progress on that front, and I think where we've landed in the development agreement will help to address that. In terms of schedule goals, our goal is to start advancing as soon as these environmental issues are put to bed, to start advancing through the permitting process with the city. And we would hope to get through that and have our permits in hand in the spring of 2021. And we'd be pushing for a construction start in the summer, early fall of 2021. So a lot of work to be done. It's a great time to be ramping it up, and we're super excited to be working with the city and the city team and are happy to answer any questions you guys may have.
Thank you very much, Ken. Councilors, any questions of either David or Mr. Braverman? Okay. I think you two have done it. Oh, yes, Counselor Heist, I see your hand. You're on mute, you're on mute. You're on mute, Counselor Heist.
I think we brought this up before, but I'd like to check again for the bike-ped committee, what the status would be in terms of covered bike storage.
Yeah, I think those items will all come up in the context of the planning board review. So we don't have final plans yet, but certainly, I think Mr. Braverman hears that that's desirable for pet bike and will be a part of the planning board submission review. Anyone else?
Yeah, hi, this is Ken. I'm not sure I heard, I think I may have heard a question about bike, covered bike storage.
Yes.
And I know in the buildings that we've recently completed that are similar design, where there's a underground or partially underground parking garage, we tend to have hanging bike storage, given the depth of the parking spaces. There's typically a three to five-foot space in front of each space that allows for a bike to be hung from that space. So typically, we get two bikes per space. And then typically, we also get, given the configuration of these garages, there's oftentimes some dead space where we have ample room for additional bike storage. So that is something that we give quite a bit of thought, and in some municipalities, we're actually required to have at least one covered bike space per unit, and we never have a problem needing that.
Great, thank you very much.
You bet.
Any other questions of either Mr. Braverman or Mr. Brooks, or the same manager, for that matter, as might pertain to the agreement proposed agreement itself? Which is extremely detailed and has been worked on for many months between Mr. Braverman's counsel hours. Hearing no questions, would someone like to make a motion? I see Counselor Bronner's seat is going up.
I would. Moved at the Lebanon City Council hereby offer as the city manager to finalize and execute the development agreement with Braverman Company LLC with the redevelopment of 2020 Spencer Street property as provided September 16, 2020, City Council Agenda Act.
Second on that?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Okay, would you like to do a roll call vote, please?
Yes, and I'd like to explain why you're now going last.
You say the best for last?
Exactly. It was pointed out to me that I should be calling on you last because in the event of the tie, you're the tiebreaker.
Oh, nicely done.
Yeah, so that is why you are now last, so.
Please proceed.
All right, so Assistant Mayor Belo.
Belo votes yes.
Counselor Bronner.
Bronner votes yes.
Counselor Heist.
Counselor Heist votes aye.
Counselor Hill.
Hill votes yes.
Counselor Prentice.
Prentice votes yes.
Counselor Sykes.
Counselor Sykes votes yes.
Counselor Winnie.
Counselor Winnie votes aye.
Counselor Zook.
Zook votes yes.
And Mayor McNamara.
Mayor McNamara enthusiastically votes yes and hopes that this is the first of many interesting projects in the downtown. Thank you very much. Thank you, Ken. Thank you, David.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council. Look forward to working with you.
And we do as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our second item of new business tonight is a discussion and setting a public hearing for October 7, 2020. This relates to ordinance number 20, proposed ordinance number 2016, to amend the code of the city of Lebanon by adding Chapter 6 Administrative Enforcement. And I think we have the chief, Chief Mello, would you like to describe for us what you're seeking here?
Certainly, hopefully you can hear me. Good evening.
Absolutely.
So this is a follow-on to my presentation from the last meeting. In the last meeting, we talked about city code amendments in additions to allow for the ticketing to avoid court summonses for various city code violations. And this is a follow-on. We didn't have this ready at the first meeting. It needed some additional work and some additional legal review. But this essentially is the mechanism by which we can utilize that method of enforcement for city code violations. So this particular chapter will define the citation authority, the citation defined, essentially what goes into a citation, the service of citations, citation penalties in defining violations. So essentially, this is the administrative legalese that gives the mechanism by which we can go ahead and put those changes into practice and being able to issue tickets as opposed to summonzing people into court. So that's what your, that's what the public hearing would be, essentially what you'll be voting on.
Thank you, chief. So again, this is a proposal tonight to set a public hearing for next month to actually vote on this. So all of our members tonight just set the public hearing. Do any council members have any questions? We've been through this one briefly a couple of times. It's gotten very good press. It's gotten high recommendations from the legal community, so seems like a great. Yes, Assistant Mayor Belo.
I move that the Lebanon City Council hereby schedules a public hearing for Wednesday, October 7, 2020, beginning at 7:00 PM, remote via Microsoft Teams, for the purpose of receiving public input and taking action on proposed ordinance number 2020-16 to amend this code of the city of Lebanon by adding a new Chapter 6 Administrative Enforcement.
Thank you, Assistant Mayor Belo. Second by Counsel Prentice, I believe. Any further questions? Chris, if you take a roll call vote, please.
Assistant Mayor Belo.
Belo votes yes.
Counselor Bronner.
Bronner votes yes.
Counselor Heist.
Counselor Heist votes aye.
Counselor Hill.
Hill votes yes.
Counselor Prentice.
Prentice votes yes.
Counselor Sykes.
Counselor Sykes votes yes.
Counselor Winnie.
Counselor Winnie votes aye.
Counselor Zook.
Counselor Zook can't work her mic and votes yes.
And Mayor McNamara.
Yes.
All right, that's a 9 to 0.
Thank you very much, folks. We look forward to discussing this next month. Our last public, our last new business item tonight is a request for an exception to city code Chapter 110 noise from sound amplification for the Gardner property on 53 Winter Street in Lebanon. You want to speak to this, Rashawn? Actually, I'll have Paula cover that. Okay, Paula, you're on.
Hi. Yep, sorry.
Sorry.
That's all right.
So yes, we just received this request from this, the resident of 53 Winter Street having, I believe it's an anniversary party on that weekend. And I thought that she was going to be online tonight. I don't know if she had technical difficulties or not. So the only information that I really have about it is what is in the packet. And we talked to her and did make her aware that she should be speaking with her neighbors, and we did write that part into the motion. She's fully aware and says she has a good relationship with her neighbors.
And so I believe this is an engagement party, and they're looking for a two-hour extension to 10:00 PM for live music.
Yeah, and it's, it's a Saturday night, so.
Yeah. We're giving that feedback to Assistant Mayor Belo. I don't know if you can read yourself, Assistant Mayor Belo, we appreciate that. Does anyone on the council, any questions about these? This is a fairly common procedure for us. Yes, Counsel Prentice.
I'm prepared to make a motion.
Please do so.
Moved at the Lebanon City Council in accordance with city code Chapter 110 noise from sound amplification system 110-2 hereby authorizes Lindsay Gardner of 53 Winter Street, Lebanon, to utilize amplification equipment until 10:00 PM on Saturday, September 26th, provided that the area neighbors are notified in advance.
Thank you. Would someone like to second that? Yes, Counsel Heist seconds. Any further discussion? Kristen, please take a roll call vote.
Assistant Mayor Belo.
Belo votes yes.
Counselor Bronner.
Bronner votes yes.
Counselor Heist.
Counselor Heist, you're muted.
Technology's going to get me. Counselor Heist votes aye.
Counselor Hill.
Hill votes yes.
Counsel Prentice.
Prentice votes yes.
Counselor Sykes.
Counselor Sykes votes yes.
Counselor Winnie.
Counselor Winnie votes aye.
Counselor Zook.
Zook votes yes.
And Mayor McNamara.
Mayor McNamara votes yes.
All right, that passes 9 to 0.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question? I'm sorry, I should have asked earlier, but I guess it's for Paula. Did you talk with Ms. Gardner and ask her what, how many people they're talking about having?
Um, I didn't. Beth took the application. I don't know how many she's planning on having.
What is, Sean, what is the rule right now? What is the, what is the governor's executive order on the rule of gatherings?
That's 100 people. So it's 100? Yeah, it used to be 10, now it's 100.
Boy, that seems like a really big group of people. All right, well, hopefully it's going to be less than 100 people.
We hope so. Masks and socially distanced?
Yeah, I just, I hope someone, maybe when this is conveyed to her, someone can also impress on her about the need for social distancing. I have to say, I have, you know, these kinds of events, I think, are really being discouraged right now. So I hope that, you know, in the interest of public health, that they will be really careful and that people will wear masks and that they will social distance. And so that's, I just want to say that. The last thing that we want right now is to unintentionally or inadvertently spread, spread the disease.
We don't want a super-spreader event. We'll do exactly as you suggested. We will make sure that they're aware of what the requirements are from the state in terms of those events.
I'm a Karen, so I had to say it, okay? I forgot my name.
I don't think you're quite fulfill that role, but thank you for bringing it up.
Thank you.
Okay, that moves us on to city manager reports, and we have quite a few of them tonight, so bear with us. Yeah, so I just want to give you kind of an update. I talked briefly about this for the last Wind for Gas and Energy project. We expect that we will be able to come through the presentation on that. It's, as I indicated before, we're looking at at least $1.2 million that's being requested of us to upgrade power substations. And now they want us to do an additional study with National Grid, and we have no idea what that additional cost is going to be. And it's getting to the point where this just isn't cost-effective. We've already spent $612,000 in public funds since 2007, and we are no closer to a solution than we were then, unfortunately, despite the work we've put into it. There, we're working on a spreadsheet, detailed spreadsheet, to provide all kinds of data to you on that, but we'll be coming forward with a recommendation. And most likely, that recommendation is going to be that we suggest that we sell the gas on the site, because there's no infrastructure cost to us to do that, unlike building the power station that's been proposed. And ironically, today, we just got notice from DES that proposing new standards for emissions for that type of facility, dramatically reducing those local levels that we're projecting we're going to reduce there, which is a whole nother problem. So in any event, we'll come to you with more details, but I just want to keep you abreast of what's going on with that, that we're probably going to be coming forward with a recommendation that we simply sell the gas. And what that would mean would be a third party, we would spend their RFP, a third party would operate a gas clean facility on our property, lease it from us, pay us for that. And then they would have trucks that would come and use that renewable gas that we're simply burning right now. Otherwise, there's no insight about how much money public, how much further public funds have to be spent to get to an answer to this, and we're 13 years into it already, and we still don't have a solution. We have got to, it comes down to a business decision, and we've got to make a decision. And my recommendation is we don't keep taking wheelbarrows of money into the under the fire, which is what we're doing. We're not getting any closer to an answer on that. So again, I'll come forward to you with a proposal on that and some detailed information.
Can I ask a question, please?
Certainly, Counsel Hill.
Has there been any renewed discussions with the businesses just across the street from landfill? I think Carroll Concrete, Twin States, Sand and Gravel. from landfill? I think Carroll Concrete, Twin States, Sand and Gravel, any of those folks?
Yeah, they don't, they don't have an interest, unfortunately, in the, in the gas. And only that, I don't want to produce a gas pipeline. I want to lock this down very tightly for when I go with gas. There has to be trucks that pull up and take the gas off-site. And there's no way to create a pipeline. We've dealt with this issue before. And I want to make sure we lock that down and that there is no pipeline of gas that comes off of city property and more larger network due to the concern, the community concerns in regards to that. And that's what we'd have to do. We'd have to build a pipeline across, underneath the road across the street. And that opens up that door. And I don't think we'll open up that door. But again, we can discuss that further when we come forward with more detailed information and a recommendation.
15 years ago, no, almost 16 years ago, they were willing, they were interested in taking the unrefined gas directly off of our hands. And putting a pipe under the, putting a pipe under 12A is not the same as building a gas pipeline. That's, that's a completely different thing. I mean, I, I think it's worth asking a question. They have a year-round operation. There's multiple companies that have heavy fuel demand. And if there's a possibility that they can actually take our, our raw product and, and use it, then it seems like it would be a win-win situation. So I, I hear what you're saying, and I'm not, I'm certainly not advocating for constructing a gas pipeline. But I am in favor of doing something with that gas. And, you know, the idea of having lots of trucks coming, you know, in and out is not particularly that appealing either. So I, I do think it would be worth, if we have not had that conversation recently, I think it would be worth engaging in, in that conversation.
Thank you. All right, streetlight project. Removals are, the goal is to get those done by the end of the year. Those are the streetlights that are going to be removed. And the installs we expect to be done by the end of March of 2021. I just signed the notice of awards to two supply companies that will provide the lights as well as smart streetlight technology. And shortly, they will have the contract for, I think it's Pine Tree, Pine Tree is a company that likes to do the install in Massachusetts. That will be forming very shortly. So that will finally get underway. I think I've told you this before, but it came in significantly under the estimated cost, which has always been news. So that's, we're looking, instead of a $900,000 project, we're looking at like a $275,000 project, which will allow us to do the extra work we wanted to do around mall here and decorative lights and get that project done. So anyway, that's a good piece of, some good news. And I have further good news, which I don't always get to relay. The DHMC polygrain, which expires at the end of this year. We've had some further meetings with DHMC, and we've worked out the detail of square footage of those sorts of things. And it's looking very positive. And I talked a little bit about the Community Empowerment Program and the Community Nurse, which we've asked to be included in that, the funding for that. That will continue year after year because we don't have to fund that through taxpayer dollars. Things are looking very positive. The draft that we sent to them, there's a few tweaks that I've been made to it, but we are, I think, in a very good position that we'll be able to get something to do shortly, board of assessors as well as the council, and get this thing signed off and agreed to by the end of the year, so they can take effect on, change what we want. Colberg Park, there's some repairs that we're going to be starting to make on Colberg Park. We had fall recently out there, the sidewalk out there, it's getting to be in pretty rough shape. I think most of you have been through there probably not too long ago. We've got some ADA accessibility issues with the tip-down ramps we're going to fix. The plan is to repave those walkways within the park and also replace benches with the final type benches, which will last a lot longer and a lot of things. Some of those are pretty nasty looking out there if you're, most people don't sit in them. And also some new picnic tables out there. So we're going to be revamping that. Most of that work is going to be done in the spring of next year. I'll be carrying forward money from this year's budget to do that, to sign the contract and covering that. Because we're going to do the light work as well. And I don't want to tear up these sidewalks again when we have to put concrete underneath it to replace them with the LED lights. We're going to be putting in there. So that work will be done sometime in the spring. But that project is moving forward. Smithfield playground project, and jump in if somebody has a question. Don't hesitate to interrupt me. It's fine. Smithfield playground project, the playground is up. And we're going to fence to do, to put in there. And I can assure you, my grandson says it's a very, very nice playground. He's two years old. He's enjoyed it immensely. And we paved the parking lot that's part of that here by the middle of October. So that, we'll complete that project down there. I shouldn't say complete. We're also looking at some solar lights in there as well for illumination. But that really helps to dress up that West Lebanon neighborhood. And that's part of that West Lebanon Improvement Fund. We've taken that money to do that. We talked about that before. FEMA funds. So the state has sent a, the state emergency may have sent a letter to the school districts on September 11th. The timeframe here is kind of important. September 11th, that FEMA had indicated that they would reimburse school districts for COVID-19-related emergency response costs. And that's, that's typical. The school district is a separate government entity. They're, they're eligible for those funds as the city is. So the, the school district's been operating on the assumption that they're going to get the, the funding for that. I think it's at 95%. Well, September 11th, the state sent an address that FEMA has changed its mind and will no longer allow school districts to apply for funds through FEMA. And what they did is they directed them to contact your municipality, your city or town, and ask them to use their CARES Act funds. The backstory on this is there's a $44 billion fund that the federal government has that's supposed to be used for disaster relief. They, the president has, by executive order, taken money out of that to fund the six weeks of unemployment compensation for people. At the same time, we've got the wildfires in the west, and we've got hurricanes in the south, and are now draining on that fund. And there won't be enough money in there. So they're taking other steps to rescind funds that they originally had committed to for those purposes. So we did get, we did receive contact from the school, they had the kind of, the timeline. So they get that letter on September 11th, that email. We have to, we had to submit our, our last request for funding by September 15th, which we actually submitted on Monday, for the, the last remaining allotment that we had, which is a total of $326,000, which we, we had submitted. So we don't have any accessibility to help on the school district. Obviously, we would if we could, but we've already spent that money. It's gone. And it was only four days. It's completely impaired the school districts. They had no time to respond.
Including the weekend.
Yeah, including the weekend, right? It's, it's absolutely ridiculous. But that's what happened. And I just want you to know that we had to tell the school district we could not help them, which, as you know, we've got a good relationship with the school district. We would help them. But that money, again, has already been spent. Hopefully, the School Boards Association will influence the governor's office and go for a to use the $132 million they have left over that they have not spent in CARES Act funds. And if they don't spend before December, they have to turn back to the federal government anyway. So I'm hoping that they will do that. And then, of course, they have to do that. I'll do what I can from the NHMA perspective, but it really is a school district, statewide school district issue that has to move that forward. We've had these little twists and turns, and we continue to get them from Gopher and the state and the federal government. I'm not necessarily blaming somebody. This is a, you know, a changing situation. And I think the folks at the state are doing the best they can with what they have. I really do believe that. Federal government's a different story. I will get into those details. But anyway, that is the situation. I want to make sure you're aware of it. It's rather unfortunate. It's, I don't think it's fair to our school district or the other school districts in the state, but it's what has occurred. So I'm just going to reiterate, we've got $326,000 in CARES Act funding for the city, which we have spent the last of that. And we were seeking the last reimbursement of that. So there is no allotment left for us. The airport just has, just over a million dollars. They spent about half of that. And we expect to spend all of that and not turn any of that back. The fire chief was able to get DOJ grants for some decontamination equipment for the police department and the fire department. And I think it's $32,000 they were able to get for that. We are seeking FEMA reimbursement, which I talked about earlier, which is 95% funding. I think, if I remember right, it's another 30, so 30 or so thousand dollars that we expect to get from that. We'll be making that submission very shortly. And that kind of rounds out the funding that we have received so far in regards to COVID-19. Other good piece of news, that's been obviously not great news there for the school district, but a better piece of news is Health Trust is going to give us $150,000 rebate. So one of the requirements are they're only allowed to keep so much surplus in their accounts, and they have to turn that back. So the city will be getting that money back. Part of that goes back to the individual employees because they pay part of the cost of health insurance premium. And the rest will go to the city. And we have to calculate that as to how much actually goes to the employees and how much the city will actually get from that. It's 85-15 split, so we can do the math, and that's about what it's going to be. City hall renovation status is actually going quite well. Some areas may be done earlier than the end of October. Our plan is still to move on the week of November 9th through the week of, through the 9th to 13th. There's a holiday between that and Veterans Day in the middle of that, the 11th at Wednesday. I expect that city hall will be fully operational on November 16th, that's a Monday. And when I can be fully operational, we'll open to the general public to go into the building and do business. Not necessarily the council meetings or those sorts of things, but regular business. That is the plan. Now that, of course, is subject to any outbreaks. We might have a COVID-19 or any other issues that may happen. We could have COVID-19 outbreak in, with construction workers that slows it down. Again, we've had a couple of those. So there are those caveats that are out there. But I'm trying to give you the big picture there. We, the Opera House, we, it was not originally powered project. We were able to save somebody in, in the project, which will allow us to fund most of that, what we want to do in the Opera House. And what we want to do is we want to insulate the inside walls of the Opera House, which again was not initially powered project, which will save some heating bills and cooling bills. That's a major part of the initiatives the city has to, to reduce our greenhouse gas initiative. And now is the time to do that because the Opera House is not operational. If we can get that done between now and March, which is the tentative timeframe, they're going to be open maybe longer than that, obviously. But this is the time to get that done. I'm going to need to move about $65,000 to someplace else in the city budget. And I need your permission to do that. So I will be coming forward to do that soon. I'm not sure where I want to take it from. It might come from clients. It might come from the health insurance amount that we have there. But I want to do that. Can't imagine you're going to be in opposition to that. It's, to be able to get that done. It's the right time, and it follows in with all of others' strategic initiatives. The total project cost is about $299,000 to do that. And that includes repainting the inside of those walls and the ceiling. So we're going to hold fresh paint in there. So that's, any questions or concerns about that? Do you have a plan on moving forward on that?
Counselors?
All right. Trick or treat. This is an issue that's come up in every town, city, across the state, probably the country as well. We have Statute of Defense Act meetings on that, discussions on how we're going to handle that. We're waiting for guidance from the state, which is supposed to come out on the 30th of this month. We expect to make final decisions on how trick or treat is going to be, is going to function in the city by the 2nd of October. And Paula, as a public information officer, will be leading that information about the guidance of how that will work. I sent out an email, sent out an email on the revaluation. I think everybody, I want to make sure every council has received that, had a chance to read that. That's going to be a big concern. The city has not had a revaluation. That's going to have the impacts that this will have in about 10 years. And that's going to cause certainly concern to the community. I want to make sure you're aware of it. This is happening in other communities around the town in particular, and as well as others. And it causes a lot of concern, a lot of consternation with taxpayers, obviously. So unless there's any questions about that, I want to make sure, again, every council's had a chance to read that. And the last piece is good news, bad news. Hertz rental car, as you've probably heard at the airport, nationwide, they're going bankrupt. So they're going to be leaving the airport. And that produces a certain amount of revenue for us that we leave in the end of the month. The good news is we already have somebody who wants to command another rental car company to take over, take over the employees that they had, take over the space, and continue to pay us the revenues we get. And we just found that out today. And so we'll work into the details of that. We have that, some, some good news, bad news. And that is all that I have for you this evening. Unless there's any questions of mine. Questions, councilors? Yes, Assistant Mayor Belo.
Could you remind us, is there another rental, car rental at the airport now? Or are they the only ones?
No, Avis is there.
Avis, right.
And ironically, they had to bring in 250, between Hertz and Avis, they had to bring in 250 additional vehicles, I think, a month or two months ago, due to the heightened mess in the New York area, people coming out here and staying up here to what we think is to avoid COVID-19.
Interesting, yeah.
Well, that has now been seen, and those cars have been brought back. However, there's still, the demand for rental cars, not so much for airport activity itself, but just general need is still pretty high over, they're above the MAG levels, the minimum levels to pay the city. We expect that they're going to be far below that. They're not, they're actually doing well. The Hertz situation is not a particular problem here in this city, but it's a nationwide issue for their company, which is why now they've been ordered to do that and close down certain locations. It's unfortunate. That's why I think the other companies, waiting the wings, they're able to take that business. It's a profitable business.
Right.
I had another question that's come up a couple of times with redevelopment of 20 Spencer Street. Where will residents go to get their two buckets of salt and sand next year this winter? Yeah, we actually made a determination on that today with DPD. They're actually going to go to the landfill, something that's where it's going to be. Yeah. So when the landfill is open, you'll be able to go in there if you want to cover it. And sometimes you get down there, and this, I haven't used the salt and sand to get down there. It's hard as a rock, can't do it, right? There'll be a certain amount of salt. They say with the two, and it's the safest place to do and minimize the environmental impact. So it won't be available off hours like it used to be, right?
Have to go during the hours.
Right, of course, they're open on Saturday and that sort of thing. We were talking about putting it at 20 Spencer Street. We still own the property. Nothing's going to happen there throughout this winter anyway. But we want to get everything out of there and really minimize any environmental impacts.
Okay.
That, that's where it's going to be. So we can advise once it'll be a little less of their area to operate. Yeah, like I said, it's going to have a bit of a mixture of salt in there so it doesn't freeze.
Okay.
That, that is the plan, yes.
Good, thank you.
Counselors, any other questions? And I think Counsel Bronner has something he'd like to say.
I'm going to turn.
You have a second to that? Counsel Heistah, seconds. Kristin, would you please do a roll call vote?
Assistant Mayor Belo.
Belo votes yes.
Counsel Bronner.
Bronner votes yes.
Counsel Heistah.
Counsel Heistah votes aye.
Counsel Hill.
Hill votes yes.
Counsel Prentice.
Prentice votes yes.
Counsel Sykes.
Counsel Sykes votes yes.
Counsel Winnie.
Counsel Winnie votes aye.
Counsel Zook.
Counsel Zook votes yes.
And Mayor McNamara.
Mayor McNamara votes yes. Thank you, folks. We'll see you in October.